We're going to have a moment of reflection for council and for the audience. Thank you. I'm gonna have the pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask, who is your water? Who will lead us in the ice cream?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before, were there any adjustments?
I have no adjustments.
Just before. We have a public hearing tonight, a conditional use permit request for a commercial garage in the B3 general business district at 30 Bauer Street, and I believe it's also 45 Clearview. Is that kind of what we're looking at? Okay. By George Gray. Is there anyone here that would like to address this issue?
I've got it.
Okay.
These are the site clients you worked with, planning commission? Can you share if you want? They're kind of big. I have eight, so. Thank you very much.
I've already seen this year.
Yeah.
I hope you have a brief easier something.
Oh, you guys have them? That's the site client you worked out with the condition use permit with.
I'm sorry, your name?
Gary, sorry.
Very good.
For our shop that we're trying to find. We've got the condition used, we came up with 14. Do you have any questions?
You didn't have any problems with it being reviewed in 12 months?
Uh, no, yeah. The, uh, I'm George, by the way.
Okay.
The, uh, planning commission worked out, I think, 14 different, um, conditions that that we totally agreed with. I mean, we could have probably written those conditions ourselves because everything on the plan to be a plan of doing anyhow. So they're designing named it keeping the character of the neighborhood and not working late nights and things like that that are pretty much, you know, pretty much what you would expect. Because there is residential there, and, oh, we live right by it, so it's, it's, uh, it's a good set of circumstances for us because, I mean, we plan on doing everything that's listed there anyhow, so, and a year from now review, we feel comfortable with that. We're not gonna do anything different. Our goal is to make it a very attractive, nice-looking place. We have work to do, and this is what it's gonna look like. Obviously, if you invite her, we have green space to grow, we've got, you know, land, some heavy work to do, pavement to put in, so, um, this is a plan, and this is what it'll look like when we get finished with it, so, um, it does look exactly like that right now, but it will.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Gray, since this was.
Certainly.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gray had read the history of your request with the BZA, the BZA last year, and then planning commission deliberations, and they supported your request eight to zero, which was good. I just had a simple question for you.
Sure.
Have the four uninspected vehicles and RV been moved?
No, the RV, uh, we have an issue with the title on the RV, and we brought that up from Mississippi with this perfectly legal tag in Mississippi. When we went to tag it here, um, that's about, we've had that for 15 years, I guess, almost 20 or 15 years, then that's in 98. And when we went to get it titled here, we bought, I bought that vehicle in Mississippi in 2000.
No.
Yeah, 2000, 21, 2001, something like that, and it was a salvage vehicle. Now, in the state of Mississippi, you can rebuild them, and we rebuilt it. There's two different things that happened there. We ultimately rebuilt it to the point where Mississippi issues a standard title, not a rebuilt title. When we went to tag it titled, Virginia's a whole lot different. The paperwork is at Richmond. They can't do it locally. They have to go to Richmond, so that's all been sent to Richmond, and from what I, I got from the DMV, they have to research it, they have to determine the specs properly, yada, 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 so we can't really drive it much on the street.
Okay.
But we're planning getting it out of there, and the trailer, it's a licensed legal trailer, so, you know, I don't think there's any quotes of, I can't, we can't park it there, although we will be moving it because it's sitting right now where the parking area is supposed to be.
Yeah, it'll have to be.
So it'll have to be moved, so, we're looking for someplace to, you know.
But the RV is your personal vehicle.
Yeah, those are our personal, every vehicle there is our personal vehicle. We're, we've gotten rid of one, um, two.
Two.
And, you know, we're just kind of, we're hobbyists. I mean, all this, we started out as hobbyists, so, you know, we pick up a car, pull around with it, sell the parts off of it, things like that, but, um, it changed a couple of months ago when my son decided that he no longer had a job, and now we're trying to, now he wants to be a business, so. But all the vehicles that are there will be gone. That's part of our agreement with the, with the planning commission was that we have no intention of having a bunch of car lot, or anything like that.
And the undisputed vehicles, are they still there?
Yeah. There is one vehicle there.
There's one there.
There's one vehicle there that we have under car cover because, um, way back when, um, the zoning board said, you know, they need to keep it covered, it's not, there's one vehicle there that we won't be getting rid of right away because it's gonna be his daily driver. It doesn't have an engine in it, he has to put the engine in it, get it put back together so he can drive it, so, other than that, everything will be gone. And the other one, there's one other vehicle that's a piece of a vehicle. There's a body that's a full race body. It's on a little trailer, and that, uh, when we get all the spare parts that are in our trailer now out of it, then that's gonna go in the trailer, so that will be gone, so the only thing that'll be there is.
The trailer.
Yeah.
We can't drive RV.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We have to get that. It's just away from Virginia, where I have no idea how long it's been. A month now, I don't have any idea how long it's been.
Can I ask something there?
Yeah.
Okay, you told the planning commission that you were gonna move those cars too.
Yeah, yeah.
I need a date. When you're gonna move them?
Well, the cars are off, they're good. There's the silver car with the covers on there, and it's gonna go in the, it's gonna be inside. It's moving inside next week.
Are you left outside now?
It's next to the shop. I've got another car under now. I gotta get it finished this week and then it goes in.
And if the race car, if we get enough, also if we get the junk that we, that we have, miscellaneous, my mover said, we have a lot of miscellaneous, said, what do you mean miscellaneous? He said, junk. Half the trailer's full of that. We gotta get it, and get it out of there and make room for the race car to go in, so, um, body on the mark. We'll, we'll, we'll commit to how to get clear and everything on there, body on the mark.
As long as we get it tagged, the RV.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any, any comments from a neighbor?
Yeah, that's next on the agenda.
Okay.
I, I notice there's some other people, some neighbors here, anyone else who'd like to speak on this? If you'll issue name and address and, uh, you don't, you don't, you don't need to come all the way up front. Bruce, I think you had your hand up first.
Bruce Moses, I'm one of, I own five properties that'd be affected on this street. Just wanna point out a couple of things. One of them, that there's no cul-de-sac at the end of this street, and it's a very narrow street. The street's half paved, so we're gonna add another business on this street. Is the town planning on coming and upgrading and widening the rest of this street for this extra traffic? Second question is, I would like to know what, it sounds like it's gonna be a, um, salvage vehicle repair shop.
Yeah, that's a negative.
Yeah, I'd like to know what type of business they plan on putting in there, you know, how many cars and?
It's gonna be a high-end race shop, and there's not gonna be any traffic. Uh, the doors will probably be locked during the day because I can't be disturbed from working, but there's also gonna be internet-based business that are running out of there. The customers I'm dealing with have cars that are anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000, so they won't be outside because they're race cars and they have no windows, so you cannot put them outside. And they won't, and they won't store their trailers there, because I'm not gonna be responsible for a trailer. It's probably gonna be my problem. It's just too many people get broken into and trailers stolen. It's just not worth it.
I hear you loud and clear, but it sounds like it's a circus already.
That's not true.
Uh, you haven't made all damn councils.
It's not a bill, it's not a business yet. I can't bring business in there to work on cars until I have a permit.
I don't come here too often to speak, very often, too often, and I'm here tonight because I'm really concerned. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Bruce. Jack?
Jack Trump, I was Joey Plopp before, our 55 RV drive, 65 RV drive. I was told at the first meeting we had here, there would be a fence, nice fence put up between us and that, it had about a bench. This Mr. Gary right here punched it up and said there would be one. He would see that it was built. It has, nothing been done. All I get is debris from the vehicles. I think it's a crying shame to bring down a junkyard on a rapid road.
You realize the cars are gonna probably worth as much as the house you have.
I'm in the car business. I know what you're talking about. I'm in the car business.
Anyone else to, uh?
I'd like to address that fence thing you just talked about.
Just a second.
There is a six-and-a-half to seven-foot privacy hedge running down the lot. It's kind of silly to expect me to build a six-foot fence next to a seven-foot shrub that is absolutely, you can't look through it, you can't see through it. It's an effective privacy screen. It's a privacy hedge.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any other comments? I'm gonna close the public hearing. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Before we do that, I will call your attention and council's attention to the fruit basket that is sitting over next to the wall there. It is from a, uh, a very appreciative citizen of Christiansburg, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this to you. It's to the town council. Dear Mayor Michael, council and staff, since founding in 1866, the industrial initiative by the Freedmen's Bureau until today, the Christiansburg Community Center continues to serve those in the community with their, with their needs. Founded by Captain William Charles Shaker, I came to Christiansburg in 1953, and I became a member of Shaker Baptist Church. I have tried to be a part of the center from 1953 to 2016. Thank you for the gift you and council and staff have made to the community center to complete their route. May God, may God continue to bless you in the future as he has done in the past, and any B. Hairston and the late John T. Hairston. Very good. Now, on the consent agenda, we have, uh, the meeting dates of April, of August 23rd, and a resolution which a copy of is in front of you, was also into your packet, uh, in recognition to help, of help save the next squirrel month, which I believe we do in October. We can do them one at a time or separately or put them together.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda, both A and B sections, as I mentioned.
Second. Got a motion in the second, Senator Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Uh.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Paul?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Seig?
Aye.
Six eight, thank you, gentlemen. I believe the public, the vote on public hearing will be the 27th that was presented tonight, so we will vote on your, on your request on the second. Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is the section that we open up for citizens to come forward and speak, tell us anything that's on their mind, uh, anything you'd like to address council. We ask that you give your name and address, if you would like to come to the podium, that's fine. If not, if you, if you wanna stand at your seat, that's fine also. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' comments. Introductions and presentations, Director of Public Relations, Melissa Powell, to report on the Public Relations Department. Ms. Melissa?
Hello, my question is general. All right. Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you for having me. I am going to discuss tonight what we feel for the Public Relations Department and where we're going. Obviously, I've only been here since May, so, um, portions of this presentation will be focused from May onward. Um, I'll, I'll go through who we are, what we do specifically, our purpose, um, and then focus a little bit on results, both from media coverage, social media, and then some new programs we're gonna let in. So, as you know, our team is composed of me and Allison Wong. We're a small team. Allison started full-time in July 2012 after being part-time for a few months, and at that decision, I joined the team in May of this year. Uh, if I had to put our purpose into one word, I'd say that it's storytelling. Why a public relations department is important, there are several reasons. The most obvious that, that you probably think about the most is keeping residents informed. Uh, that can be anything from, you know, a, a small street closure so that people aren't caught off-guard when they try to pull into the driveway at night, or, um, you know, an active emergency situation. So building that base, um, in ways and means to communicate with as many community members as we can. But storytelling can go, can go further. It can, it can move into areas like economic development, um, something I call placemaking, and that's kind of presenting an identity of the town of Christiansburg so that when people, um, perspective residents or businesses or organizations, go to our website, our social media, um, how we're covered in the news media, they, they kind of see our identity. They can understand what's important to us and, and how we're perceived by the larger region. A few things, a few adjectives I would use to describe our department in the short time I've been here is that we're, we're very effective. Um, we, we get the word out however we need to get out so that we can reach the most people. We're timely, and that's, you know, if, if a citizen comes to us with a concern, a question, a complaint, or if a news, a news media organization, a journalist comes to us with requests for information, those are things that we prioritize, and, and we try to get back to them as quickly as we can. And we're proactive. We're not just sitting around waiting for those questions to come in. Um, we're in communication with, with the news media, with, with the public on a, on a daily basis, and, and every week, um, we're pitching stories that are personalized to reporters and, and going out with press releases. We're transparent, we're consistent, we're approachable. These are all things, you know, that we really strive to be so that people know that they can come to us for this information. So what we do specifically. A lot of these things you guys know about, so I won't talk in great detail, and, and several of them are mentioned in later slides, so I'll just touch on them briefly here, but, um, again, the obvious thing is media outreach and press releases. Um, but beyond that, on, on the staff side, um, something that's really important to me, and this comes largely from my background in, in agency PR, is making sure that when I'm putting a spokesperson forward for an interview, that they know what they're getting into, and that's not meant to be offensive to them. I know that they're the expert, and that's why I'm sending them forward, but I want them to feel comfortable. I want them to know the background of how this, this interview came about, um, what kind of questions may be asked, and then I wanna sit in with them if I can, or, you know, if they want me there, so that if there's a question that comes up and they don't know the answer, I'm there to kind of interject and say, we can get, we can confirm that information for you, get back to you, and then I'm able to follow up with the reporter. And then I don't leave them hanging. I let them know what happens, and you guys see a lot of those coverage recaps that I send to you, um, quite frequently, but also if it was a, if it was a piece that I worked really closely one-on-one with somebody, I might go back to them and provide additional feedback, um, a separate email or an address. Obviously, the town website, the social media, a big part of our job, notify me, which is, um, community members can sign up to receive alerts when we post things on the website. And citizens' alert, which I'll go over later, but that's our new code red, our new emergency system, so we're responsible for sending out those alerts. All external publications, our newsletter that goes in the utility bill every two months, um, the welcome guide, other things that are distributed to the public, FOIA, I serve as the FOIA officer for the town, so when those requests come in, you know, obviously that's a very important, um, operation of a government organization and several other organizations, but getting that information to the public and to the news media when they request it. And then some, some internal things, the internet and new topics that I'll discuss in a later slide, focused on information sharing within staff, so making sure everybody who works here for the town knows what's going on, um, and, and things like for morale, like the town picnic, picnic, our annual picnic to bring everybody together. The Montgomery Christiansburg Citizens Academy is happening now. Um, we, we help run those sessions once a week. Public meeting notices and town council meeting videos, we post online, um, and town council recaps is something kind of new where, you know, you notice me taking notes in the back. I recap those, recap the meetings for department heads at our staff meetings and also post on the internet so that everybody in town that works for the town, you know, not everybody can get here on a Tuesday night, but that doesn't mean they're not interested, and they don't have questions about what's going on, and that if they get asked from the public about what's going on, they, they've seen what's happening in these meetings. Editorial support for other town departments. Every week, every day, we're working with several departments. I mean, today I worked with five different departments on the road, so, kind of helping them with, whether it's an engineering capital project, helping create the external materials that will be distributed to the public, or, um, flyers for aquatics or rec, um, letters, if public works wants to send a letter to residents on a certain street letting them know of construction, things like that. And then branding, which is a new initiative that I'll discuss later on, kind of creating a consistent approach to the town. Here's a four-month snapshot by the numbers, so this is all from May of 2016. We have released 101 press releases. Um, we've garnered 89 news articles, newspaper articles, and 55 TV segments, and these are numbers specific to topics that cross my desk, so it's not just every time the town of Christiansburg is mentioned, I put it on here, and, and we were in some way involved in the, the results. Um, so that's 144 pieces of coverage since May, which we're really proud of. So how do these stories originate? Several ways. I've mentioned press releases. That's obviously the easy way to get the word out there. Those press releases go on our website. People who are signed up for notify me get the notification, and we send out specific, you know, depending on the press releases, we send out media. But we're not just doing that. Um, a big part of this job is building relationships with the journalists in the area, and something that I really prioritize and feel important coming from a journalistic background. I know kind of what the journalists want when something crosses my desk. I know, you know, if it's gonna be something that's very visual, that might want a TV, if it's something that doesn't have those aspects, I can't get somebody on camera, I can't provide the B-roll, and maybe it's something I can pitch to the newspapers, and, and, you know, I try to just know the individual journalist too, so, you know, maybe this TV reporter or this one would be interested in this story. So I'm kind of constantly thinking of things to pitch. When, when I hear about things, I think about how, how I can pitch that, and also it's, um, you know, a goal is to be kind of the person that they come to. So I've had several days where I get texted to me, and like, I'm sitting in my meeting, I don't have a story for today, what is in town, how's it going on? And that goes back to trying to be that approachable source of information for people. And then, you know, sometimes we just tweet or Facebook things, and we don't necessarily think, oh, that's a good pitch, and they think it's interesting, and, you know, they come to us and ask of, ask about things that we put out there on social media. So social media by the numbers. Um, social media is another thing that I'm, you know, really working on. These numbers aren't where I want them to be, but since May, we've had an increase of either 14 or 15% on the town and PD Facebook pages, which are the ones that, um, our department is directly responsible for. You know, in a way that we're doing that is kind of being more visual, as you see in this background photo. Uh, this was a town council meeting right after the Pokemon Go app was released, so, kind of jumping on trends, and, you know, I tweeted that and said, "A new citizen came to speak during the public hearing section," and it was received really well, so kind of just being that, that approachable, not to overuse that word, source on social media, where people might be scared of you guys sitting behind this big desk and not, and think it's a very formal setting, but kind of bringing it to your home, saying like, we can have fun, and, you know, you can come here, you can express your concerns to this council. So even though the numbers of likes aren't where I want them, I, I am happy with how many people we're reaching on a daily basis. Every post we post gets thousands of views. It reaches thousands of people, and, um, our posts with the highest reach have reached, you know, 22,800 people and 31,200 people at PD. Um, so we'll continue working on that moving forward, working to get the, the pages verified, um, you know, those little blue or gray checkmarks, and I think that that, you know, it can be a kind of sticky process, but, um, once you have that, it kind of shows people where this official source of information, you should follow us. We'll get you important things that you need to know. Photos, like I said, um, public works I have here, just as an example of making sure we're reaching all departments. Um, you know, it's really easy to Facebook and tweet and Instagram about aquatics and parks and recs because they're always doing these really great events, but public works is, is very visible in the town, um, and so letting people know what's going on. And then consistency across accounts. I mentioned that PD and, uh, the town Facebook page and PD and the town Twitter page are the ones we mainly handle, but there are other accounts. There's, you know, the farmer's market, there's aquatics, there's fire and rescue, um, and they have separate administrators. We can go on there, but they generally post. So something I'm working on organizing is training across all social media administrators so that we're consistent on how we post, um, and making sure, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's something that presents one, one town image. And I didn't mention, I don't think, we started a town Instagram in June. We have 320 followers, which is pretty good for, for starting on Instagram. I mentioned the posts with, with high-reach reaching power. Um, these were the two, the ones in the town was, um, something that was just kind of offhandly mentioned to me from the finance department about a woman who came in and paid another woman's utility bill, a random act of kindness, and we posted that on a Friday. It was just kind of a happy story. It got, you know, more than 800 likes, uh, 22,000 people reached. And the Christiansburg Police Department has a similar post. It's a, a couple who paid for a police officer's meal anonymously at a restaurant, and it was another thing that someone just said, like, you probably don't care about this, but this is kind of cool. This happened, you know, more than a thousand likes, tons of shares, and you can see the kind of comments that come out of this is, you know, Christiansburg, I love Christiansburg. I'm so proud of my hometown. So many great people live here. Uh, thank you for sharing this story and continuing to build a caring community. So it's just kind of something we can do that's, that's, that's quick, and it creates a, people leave our page feeling positive about where they live. And this kind of segues into my next section, which is on new programs, because both of those stories came out of our communications 18 group, um, which is a group that we've created that can be department heads, but it's, it's not, it wasn't specifically, we weren't specifically inviting department heads. We were asking for someone else within each department to come and meet with us on a regular basis, um, to kind of share what the department is doing that's not tied to a specific event. We know about events when they're coming up. We know, we will share that information always, but, you know, this is stuff that can be featured stories that can go whenever, and, you know, that was when Mark Evans in finance was there and said, "Well, this thing happened yesterday. Someone paid someone's utility bill, but that's not a news story," and I'm like, "But it's a great social media story." And so that's kind of taught people to recognize those things, to send me photos when they see them. Um, Captain Ramsey with the police department was, is in that group, and he was the one who then told me the story of the bill being paid, and then another day, sent me this photo of his Starbucks cup. I think he had been on vacation for two weeks. They recognized that he was back and said, you know, "Thank you for your service." And Brooke was on his cup, and so we shared that, and it was another thing that, you know, people just really appreciated hearing that story. I mentioned the internet earlier, so it appears kind of to internal communication. This is a, it's an easy format, created, you know, very simply. Um, we'll look to expand it, add additional features in the future, but we just launched it a couple of weeks ago, and anybody who's on the network, any staff is on the network, when they pull up their Internet Explorer, this is their homepage. So, um, it provides town news, town council recaps, um, you know, updates, for example, one of the things when we were looking for our HR director, like people were saying, where are we in that process? Updates on things like that. Social news, so if you have your child selling Girl Scout cookies and you don't wanna blast any mail to everybody, you can put it here. It's kind of like a bulletin board. And then like events going on that's like, check out, don't forget about Women's Trail is on social news. Headlines, so it's a reformatted version of what I send you guys so that everybody's aware of what's going on. Um, HR policies, insurance information, benefits information, commonly requested forms, and then quick links both to like our town logo and our letterhead, so you don't have to search through the public drive to find it, and to other community organizations. I mentioned that I'm the FOIA officer. This year, I brought in, uh, the Virginia Freedom of Information Advisory Council to do a FOIA training. Um, we had 29 people from all over the region, from tech, Bradford, other towns and counties, police departments, sheriff's office, participate in this, and it's something I hope to do on an annual basis. Citizens' alert, so in place of code red, we launched citizens' alert, um, in the end of June, beginning of July, and we now have 47,518 people we can contact via citizens' alert all throughout Montgomery County. Um, so it's been really successful. We've held training sessions at the rec center to get, you know, senior citizens who may not have a computer or, or. or understand how to sign up. We've been there one-on-one, helping them sign up. Allison Damsler, thousands of minutes of calls signing people up. Everybody who works on this floor has heard her signing them up for months. So it's a really quick way that, you know, in case of emergency, and we can personalize the messages, people who want to know about street closures, who want to know about community events, we can send out via Citizens Alert. Branding is a great new initiative, you'll be hearing more from me on as it continues. Something Steve and I have talked a lot about together. Wayfinding and location signs, also entryway signs when you come into Christiansburg, and then as you're trying to find your way around. Kind of creating that consistent look, so that when people are within town limits, they know they're within town limits. And it's modern and clean and effective. Along with those signs, the broader branding plan goes over things like approved fonts and colors, the new logo, how to use it, when to use it, things like that. So everything we're releasing to the public, they can tell it comes from us and it looks good. But this is still in the works, so I'll shortly back up here and talk to you about this. And looking forward, a priority for me is the website. It's something that I think we could make much more visual, much more modern, much more easy to navigate, as well as, you know, continue to update it on a more regular basis. There's a way to work with our backend so that we have continuous updates, and we're not just finding ourselves like, this great new website, and then in a couple of years, thinking we need a new website again. And social media, I've mentioned many times, but kind of continuing to focus on that, build our base, because that would be important when we want to reach, you know, wide breadth of people in the community. We know we can go there and host things there. Inserting ourselves sounds a little aggressive, but what I mean by that is, you know, making sure that we're a recognized source in the region, that people can come to the town. And we have experts here who can speak in engineering, you know, we have experts on the rescue squad. We can speak to these broader topics that aren't necessarily just about the town of Christiansburg. So making sure we're there, we're thought of when people are looking for stories, that they know we have sources here. And communication with residents is something, you know, continuing to find ways to reach them, whether it's a letter in the mail, whether it's social media, it's online, and making sure we're reaching as many people as possible. So also, that's Councilman Hubbard right there, the one that lost him. And it's very simple, like, because we're crossing a number into community territory.
Slow pace, you can't.
So, question?
Let me, I'll start with that, Ms. Powell. I'm sure everyone has people followed me on this. The, not a day goes by that we don't get an update, not a day goes by that we don't get an email, a phone call, or something of that nature that keeps us in the know. I think that from a council perspective, from my perspective in the past, the concerns were that we would hear information third-party at times, or that we wouldn't be able to engage the citizen if they had a question about it. I don't feel that way anymore. Frankly, I feel like I've almost got information overload, to a good degree, because I'm trying to process and making connections and making points. It's also very clear we have a great working relationship with our local media outlets, both print and digital. I think every time that we get an email, at least in the last three or four weeks, it's had, we have done this with DVD Day 7 or WTS of last, there's all those different news outlets that obviously go to you. I'm very appreciative of that, I love the updates. I know it's time out of your day that you do just for us. And I know that, and it's also that, in this line of work, I'm sure when you take your attention and put it over here, it just takes you away, and you have to kind of get back, get started again. I know it takes time out of your day to do that. I sincerely appreciate that, and I don't want it to go unnoticed. But in addition as well, I've just been very appreciative that the updated information on the website. Everybody, there's gonna be a mistake, there's always clerical, something, I do the most, and one letter out of the day, I make a mistake in. But update, updating the website, there's so much information. And some of us, we look, we're trying to see if things are right. Sometimes we just frankly just double-check to make sure citizens are made aware. I don't see those things anymore, or if I do, it's miniscule. And it's just, it's obvious that you put your heart and your soul, and your work ethic is fantastic. Again, I don't want to speak for council, but I think I can. I really appreciate the job that you're doing and keeping us informed day in and day out. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Hor, I'm Mr. Hoff, and speak for me too, because I agree with you 100%. It's awesome to get all this done every day.
You've made a big impact, and it's hard to stand out when you're being bombarded with stuff. But three adjectives I think of when I think of Melissa. Already, after four short months, you're very professional, you're very passionate, and you're very visible. I mean, even Saturday at the rec center, you and your husband, and we had Terry Caldwell, Ms. Caldwell was there too. But you're sold out for being here, and it shows, but I don't think there's anyone in this room that could say, could not see your passion. I had a mentor once that says, "Enthusiasm trumps mediocrity." And you have enthusiasm, and we're fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
It's a treat to have you with us.
Well, this is funny.
I always reach out, if you have a question.
Sure. It is a real exciting time of day when I'm in my office and I'm listening to the two PR girls go back and work on their stuff, and between Allison singing and answering phone calls. It's an exciting day, but we do really, I feel much more comfortable. I mean, and I know, I knew prior to, I knew some of the things that were going on, I had no idea. And this really helps, when somebody's, "What are you doing over here?", and you can answer, and not be caught off guard. So I think the last time I looked, I had 65 of your releases that I'd saved under Public Relations, so that's, that's good. It's impressive. And Allison, sorry she couldn't be here, and I know she had a family commitment, but, you know, Allison does a great job.
Yeah, we're a very small team, and she picks up a lot of it, so.
And please make sure she knows I echo what I said to you as well about her.
And especially coming in, you know, to a new job like this, and she's been invaluable, all of her institutional knowledge and everything that she's able to do quickly and effectively, so. Thank you, guys.
Anything else, anybody, gentlemen, ladies? Thank you. Under the old business, we have the appointment to the Tourism Development Council. This is a, we discussed this several months ago, and there was a recommendation from Lisa Bleakley and the tourism group about appointing, I hope I get it right, Ashish Malathur?
Yes, sir.
Did I get it good?
Yes.
He is the general manager of Blackstone Grill. And he has been recommended by the Tourism Board to replace Marie Marsh, who elected not to come back on to the board when her term ended. I will say, in doing some homework tonight, I went to the Blackstone Grill website, and I saw 120 tourist comments about Blackstone. They were very, very positive, and whether they were good or bad, she's answered all of them. We mailed them back to thank them for their stuff. So he is probably as big a tourist draw that we can rely on than anything around him, so. How's that? So, Ashish, please stand.
Yes, sir.
Anybody that goes to the Chamber of Commerce functions and things like that, he's a regular at it. And I appreciate that side of the service.
Thank you, sir.
So I would.
I will move that we approve the appointment as requested.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just, you reiterate the same thing, Ms. Mayor, I appreciate what you're doing for the town of Christiansburg.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thanks.
I appreciate you being here and seeing me too.
That's right.
Madam clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stowe?
Aye.
I believe that with these six, thank you, up on the board.
Thank you.
We have a follow-up discussion regarding the Hoover Valley Regional Water Authority and Capital Improvements Plan.
Mr. Biggs? Just, mayors and members of the council, I'm willing to include this on the agenda for tracking purposes, also to give you the update that, in follow-up to the presentation, we now have the information, we'll be in terms of our projected wholesale water costs to move forward with our own internal rate study. So we have an RFP on streets at this time, seeking a qualified consultant to perform that rate study. The rate study will look at our rates over the future years, and we will seek to get an assessment of the need for plan improvements, the need for line extensions, continuing maintenance and repair, and also the impact of the general fund transfer to the water sewer fund. The timeline that was mentioned during the most recent special work session that we held on this topic indicated that they were going to seek some response from the members in the November timeframe. We do not expect to have our rate study done within that timeframe, and that is too short of a timeframe. I think in some ways, the evaluation of the trend in rates and the evaluation of the need for the capital improvement, certainly at the plant, are independent. I think that we saw a very compelling presentation on the need to protect our water supply by making investment in the plant. And so what I want to do is just, one, tonight, give you that stash report, let you know our thinking is that the rate study is an important thing, but it's more a budgetary tool than it is a decision-making tool. It's a planning tool. And that we need some instruction if you want to have another special work session follow-up to what was presented at the last one. Do we need a committee meeting, do we need a special work session? What are your expectations or need for additional information in follow-up?
Mr. Biggs, if I may, the committee meeting will be beneficial. A work session would be, I think, incredibly more important, in my personal. And I think the committee meeting and having it through, basically see through Henry and I, and yourself, and Mr. Wayne Nelson, I think it would be more, it'd make more sense. I used to use the word horse's mouth, but if you kind of get it all at one time, all of us can all just be able to be engaged. And that would be my recommendation to all of us, that we would go for on a work session to study this, instead of having, us have a committee, which I think can, very much is going to lead to a work session anyway. But that would just be my two cents on the matter.
Okay. So the work session where we revisit the information that was provided to us at the joint meeting of the water recovery, and just kind of map out a strategy for how we will evaluate the side of the decision and communicate that decision to the board.
I think that makes perfect sense to me, but I don't want to speak for all the council.
Is this a timeframe, once we get the reports back, or is this in the interim before the, before the study?
This is in the interim, prior to our questions or our decision to get a member, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because we all know there were some differences in the extensions.
Yes.
This will help us put our head together and have a lot of collective, you know, we do it one time.
I have a question, and maybe it's not the most intelligent question, but, Mr. Biggs, in your professional experience so far, do we need a rate study?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I received a call, and we've had those before, the output is basically showing us how we compare with our surrounding localities, and, you know, and statewide averages and so forth. I mean, we heard some sobering news recently, and it seems like, if you think we need to.
The reason I would say that is, obviously, our wholesale cost is going to change. That is a major component of our overall cost per service. The council is also aware from the most recent water sewer committee meeting that we have some very significant maintenance and repair costs associated with overflow and filtration. So there are some factors there that I think it's very important for us to understand the impact on the revenue.
And that's part of the rate study as well, I and I and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then my other admission is, is, you know, you joined your study, and you work on that, and you're cautious of that. Thanks.
Henry?
Steve? Anybody, gentlemen, we good?
All right.
What we'll do is just follow up, and I'll work with engineering staff, and we'll try and post some potential base for the work session, try and accept.
And, Mr. Biggs, I know you can't speak to this with any, with any, I guess, certainly not dispositively, but when would you expect us to have the information back from the RFP regardless of the rate study, when we can start to digest it? Are we talking about the end of the year, or?
I would look for that probably in January.
Okay, anymore? That's still pretty aggressive, though, it sounds like.
It is, it is, but there was just no way we could make November.
Absolutely not, absolutely, and I agree with you, there's no reason, something, this is a big task, to rush into this. Are we able to give a response back to the water authority, kind of hasty piecemeal, it might be the wrong term, but I think we would all agree, and the cap improvements are certainly, I would almost say mandated, if we want to provide, again, the service and the water to the level which we have been providing it. But the other issue that will be discussed, I guess, going forward, are we able to give a, kind of, I hate to say a partial answer, but to give a response back, but knowing that in the future, things are subject to?
Right. I think that the first level of response is the acknowledgement of the need that has been demonstrated to us. They also posed to us at that work session some different approaches in terms of the financing and timeline associated, or phasing associated with one of those projects. And I think that to give them feedback on what we think about the phasing and financing options, and that sort of thing, would also be very valuable.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Steve, prior to our work session, you could find out about phasing, if their time, timeline is set in stone, and what they're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, it looks like November, we're willing to give them a definite maybe, because that. Mr. Biggs, anybody else, any questions or comments further on this subject?
I just appreciate that RP's already out, it's already on the streets. So that's great, thank you.
Under new business, we have a discussion regarding decision to potentially lease existing off-premise sign at the recreation center, or have it removed. I believe that is the farmhouse sign.
Yes, sir. There's a sign that is an off-premise sign that is there. We've been approached about the possibility of entering into a lease on that sign. Wanted to find out from the council, one, are you amenable to a lease? Also consulting with our attorney, what we've learned is that five years in the term of a lease is a very important milestone. If you go longer than five years, it places the item in a whole different process that we think would be, you know, more cumbersome in time consumed, probably not a good return on our time investment. If we were to look at doing it longer than five-year terms. So the first level of question that we would have for the council this evening is, are you interested in having the staff enter into a negotiation, a potential party for lease of the existing off-premise sign at the rec center? And two, if the answer back is yes, then we're going to see preliminary feedback that we would recognize that we would want it to be less than five years. We just wouldn't want to invest the time it takes to get through the process to go longer than five-year terms. I don't think that the payback would be there for us in terms of the difference in the market that we could, market value that if you get in the sign.
You were probably correct that you said the sign right now, if it's not in compliance with?
It is pre-existing non-conformous sign, and I can prefer you to, to Andy or Andrew for the details on that. But it exists as an off-premise sign. The sign face can be changed, but the sign structure cannot be enlarged or modified.
I'm absolutely in favor of working with the farmhouse to use that. I think there's perhaps even an implicit expectation of that, because the sign is there. It is not the prettiest sign yet, but perhaps if we do this, then maybe there will be some, you know, some enhancements to that sign. But I would want to record saying, I absolutely support continuing to let them do that. And they're going to need the help out there, off the path to, you know, continue letting people know they're back there. But my footnote, my asterisk for that would be that I hope when we do that, that there'll be some discussions about maybe enhancing it somewhat.
If we were to go through the process and negotiation, then obviously it would come back to the council for approval. We're going to need a vote on the item tonight, but just before we enter into the time associated with that negotiation, wanted to make sure that it was consistent with the council's expectation that it would be going that way, rather than looking to have the sign removed.
I would concur with everything Mr. Councilman Stott said.
Thank you.
You know, the farmhouse has been, I've been around here for 45 years, and the farmhouse has been a landmark the whole time we've been here. And whenever you think about Christiansburg, you always think about the farmhouse. And I myself, I'm really pleased to see it being reopened. And the sign does need to be upgraded some, and, but I think it'd be great if we can work with them as best we can, and I'm sure that they'll, eventually we'll come up with a amount of what they're going to have to run it from, us for. And I would just think that we should just work with them as well as we can, and encourage them to keep going. And it's going to be definitely a positive thing for the town and for them.
I've actually been worried sick it's going to become an. I'm actually a little worried sick it's going to become an eyesore, but it is just wonderful. We should work with them.
Okay.
So we got a pretty much of a head nod to go ahead.
It works.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion to schedule a council and staff strategy planning work session?
Mayor, members of council, you had included in your fact, just a short run around describing this event, for lack of better description, we call it our retreat. We're trying to zero in on a date for holding of that retreat. We're thinking of a Thursday, Friday format. In the agenda, I did reference the possibility of doing that on the 10th and the 11th of November, and as an alternative, fall back date the following week, which I guess would be the 17th and 18th.
If I could, and I know it, it's my fault, third and fourth, I know I...
It's your fault.
It is my fault, and I will take responsibility for it. The 10th and 11th, absolutely, I don't have, I have nothing. It's clear as of early. The 17th is a problem, the 18th is clear. But if we could do it on the 10th and 11th, that works with your schedules. If not, I could always try to move. There's just one, I have a truck on the 17th, and that's the only thing that I have. But if that would work with you all, the 10th and 11th would be perfect.
I think it's good to have it that early day, too. If we start moving back, we start getting into Christmas things and holiday, and I myself can support the 10th and 11th, too. That's a good time, really.
9th and 10th, thumbs up for me. I would not be in town on 18th.
That's Brad's fault.
That's Brad's fault.
For the 18th. No, I prefer the 3rd and the 4th, my friend.
So are we...
For the 10th and 11th, excuse me.
10th and 11th?
Yes, sir. I don't want to tank this because we're so close, but to be honest, if we do it on the 10th and 11th, we probably will not hold it at the venue we previously did. I think there's likely a conflict on the 11th. So whether we hold it the 10th at Crosspoint and the 11th at a different location, or just find an alternative location for the 10th and 11th, that remains to be worked out. But preliminary, I think we probably have a facility conflict on the 11th.
Myrtle Beach would be fine.
It's our show, but it's yours, your meeting to play in, so...
We'll work it out. Just wanted you to know that.
Very good. Consideration of a policy to schedule public hearings through adoption of consent agenda.
Again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you had in memoing your agenda fact, describing a suggestion that we depart from pass procedures in scheduling of public hearings. As I understand it, in the short time I've been here practicing, what we do in terms of scheduling of public hearings is that under the manager's report, I would just verbally list out those items that we are aware of that are subject to public hearing, and the council will receive those and schedule the public hearings. The vast majority of all of our public hearings are really very ministerial, you know, processes that are spelled out based on the submission of an application and the inevitability of holding a public hearing as part of that process. They're not discretionary. What we'd like to do with all of those items, where a public hearing is just a, you know, known and accepted part of the process, that rather than kind of patently report them over the manager's report, that we would be allowed to go in and include those as items on your consent agenda, so that they would be approved at the front end, that, for instance, the items that I'm going to report on in just a few minutes would have appeared on the consent agenda for the season. If you have any questions about any of those appearing items that shows in the consent agenda, obviously, you know, we can pull it off and have explanation or discussion of it. But our concern is that in the process that we have now, things could very easily slip, fall through cracks. It's almost an unnecessary formality to give the report on it during the manager's report. So if we can just go ahead and put it under the consent agenda, I think it will help expedite the meetings, and it will create for us a process that's more predictable and regular that we probably can follow.
Mr. Biggs, of all the, what, seven years I've been on council, not one time have we objected to a public hearing being scheduled, or the time, or the date. We've never objected to it, obviously. The only thing I would ask, and I think it makes perfect sense, the whole purpose was just to, you're certain it was a great thing, I think maybe Councilman Stipes mentioned a couple years ago, we started doing it. It's a great time saver for things. But the only thing I would ask is that if we, for instance, tonight, if we have as a addendum C or an item subsection C under consent agenda, section four, is if we would just simply have the public hearing, if we have some type of language about, spelled out, that way it's still on the face of our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Is the only thing I would ask for, and I think it makes perfect sense. I agree, if some things that are just done, I don't know why we would do this at the tail end, but frankly, if we have it out there, it's going to make more people aware of it. No one's going to wait till the very end of council to hear about the public hearing anyway. So it just makes it more transparent, in my opinion.
It's my assumption you'll have a suggested date of that hearing?
Yes, and whatever.
Hold in the whole thing?
We will name the item and the date.
You all already know the times and dates, and that's absolutely out of, we've never done that, we've never objected.
No, but putting it in print, people would like to be aware of it.
Proceed. I get the feeling it's a proceed. Thank you.
Great sense.
Under committee reports, resolution supporting addition of projects and reprioritization of projects within Virginia Department of Transportation project programming. And I think we have a separate handout on that that came across. That is, came about, I guess, through the MPO meeting. We changed a couple of things at the meeting that we would like to them to proceed on, that if I can find it. I was at that meeting, and I think one of the things that we wanted to do was, we talked about asking them to adjust the intersection of Flicker Street to tie it in more to, I think, to ramp the road. And after we thought about it, there's three programs that we're going to do. One of them is, we want to ask them to consider a left turn lane there at College Street, Pizza Inn, left, both ways, left, advanced left turn lane. The second is the...
That's actually item number three that you mentioned.
Yeah, I just never had...
Number, yeah, and one and two are, one and two are the projects along that.
The original came from, I guess, staff, flip it to the street committee, and before it went to the MPO. And basically, there are four projects that are, I guess, proposed, with the number one priority being the North Franklin Street, Timber Street project. That is funded through the HBD2 process last year, so we will not be, we don't need to reapply for that. That's still proof. It's actually a six-year plan now. The other projects, second priority would be the connector route, and we are going to apply to the entire connector route as one project. Last year, we applied as two separate phases. Through discussions with VDOT, we decided to basically take that down from a four-lane road to a two-lane road, at least through a portion of it. The four-lane coming off of North Franklin Street, basically to a acre. And then, prior to the town park on Truman Wilson Land, that we also go back to a four-lane road a little prior to that.
But ultimately, it's four-lane.
Yes, and it would be designed entirely to four-lane. The third project is the intersection of Main and Depot Street. And the fourth project, this is actually, I think, the street committee, we were considering the interchange of the playground, less many, but through the street committee, we ended up with doing the Parkway Drive extension through South Franklin Street.
You're a good man. I'll change the course. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we could have a motion to approve this resolution.
So move the second.
A motion in the second. Any further discussion, additional comments?
I would just say that I certainly agree with that, number one.
I think that they're very, very well thought out.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the staff's time and effort on that. So we have a motion in the second. Madam clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sides?
Aye. We'll be 6-0. Thank you. Mr. Stipes, I assume we'll be signing that thing pretty soon? Okay. Staff reports, do we have any staff reports scheduled for the month, please?
Just a few quick items for you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to remind the council, there's a public meeting on September 15th from 5:00 to 7:00 regarding the exit 114 realignment through the S D of Mill School. Just a reminder, council, the prior input of positions that the town has taken on that particular project, we asked that they include four lanes, or area for four lanes under the bridge, that there be casement pipe on both sides to facilitate our future utility extension needs. Of course, that we look for logo signs on Interstate 81, and that we would hope there would be lane expansion area on Interstate 81. Final thing is that there would be accommodation for pedestrian access along the highway there, if we need to get through that. Those were our topics that we hit with them previously in correspondence, but I mentioned those biases, that when we go into that meeting, we have that in our mind consistently, and can evaluate what they're talking about relative to what we've asked. Before-mentioned public hearings, got a bunch of them. We passed this note to the clerk after, but we have community development block grant, annual action plan. We'd like to set that public hearing for September 27th. We have comprehensive plan amendment related to the urban development districts. We would like to hold that hearing on November 8th. We have vacation of public utility easements related to the Kroger property. We would like to set that hearing on October 25th.
Mr. Biggs, what was that one again, I'm sorry?
To vacate public utility easements related to the Kroger expansion. And that would be the 25th of October. Vacation of a portion of Stone Street related to Kroger, again, on the 25th of October. We have a conditional use permit for exterminating service at 516 Roanoke Street in B3. We'd like to set that hearing for October 25th. And the final one is a public hearing on lease of public facilities for communications equipment. That's the item that we reported to you last month on, relative to the wireless devices attached to our available storage pens, and we would like to hold that hearing on September 27th.
So you're doing all six of the public hearing, that certainly reinforces what you were asking for this evening.
Right.
We would have to reinforce, but to set those now, will we do this now?
Yes.
Then I would move that we set the public hearing for the community development block grant on September 27th, the comprehensive plan amendment on November 8th, to vacate the utility easement and to vacate Stone Street, vacate the Stone Street property pursuant to Kroger on October 25th for both of those. The CUP exterminating, CUP request for exterminating company on 516 Roanoke Street, and additionally for the public lease, sorry, the lease of the public facilities for a communications project on 10/27. Hope I got this correct.
Pretty good. Close. The last, I think, is September 27th?
Yes.
That's it, yep, so from 10/27.
Got a motion in the second? We have a discussion. Madam clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sides?
Aye.
We'll be 6-0. Thank you. Anything else from staff reports?
Yes, there's other staff.
I'll mention the homecoming parade tomorrow night at 6:30.
Yeah. They're going to assemble, they'll start staging here in front of, you said it starts at 6:30?
Yes.
6:12?
And they'll start staging, basically, parking right in county area about 5:00.
Are you judging Steve eating more pies than me?
Yeah. Steve has to eat two of those mounds that they, you know, and keep it down. Incidentally, he was a trooper at the Heritage Day with that pack contest. I had to talk to you, sir. Clever as you, clever as you this year, not me.
I'd rather be somebody else next year. I don't recommend you again.
Okay. Thank you. Under council reports, Mr. Collins, are you...
Yes, sir. I just got one thing. I went the other day to the public works area, and by the time I got into where the buildings are, about 12 screws had come out of my car, and I had to get the front end realigned. The road in there is terrible. Bumpy up and down.
Busy, it's everybody else's streets. We don't have time for our...
Oh, yeah, I know. I know, but we need to take care of our own people, too, you know, and that affects our equipment also, you know. And plus the employees who have to park them through there. It wasn't 12 screws, it was just six.
And the loose one you carry was you all...
Thanks.
Please?
Yeah, I have a concern. I have been attending the farmer's market about every Thursday, and I have to turn things that I've seen I have not seen, and I'd like for Mr. Biggs to set up a work session, if possible, for town council and members of the farmer's market committee, to see if we can find out what's going on.
As in, lack of attendance, or...
Yes, they have lack of attendance and lack of vendors. Something's going on. So that's why we have a work session, see what we can narrow it down.
All right. We'll get to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
When I express my appreciation to Town Manager Biggs and members of council, the mayor, I think we showed our solidarity again by all attending the Water Authority as many as possible, in addition to, we worked together recently for the, regards to the school system, and looking at the Christiansburg strand of schools, and I very appreciate that we're doing that as a group as much as possible. I know there's a lot of other things that we have to take up our time, but I think it's important for us to do those together as much as we can. I appreciate the flag downtown, it's very nice, especially in terms of homecoming parade tomorrow night and the Waters Festival coming up on this Saturday. So there's a lot of things, and I call attention to that because what we saw with the comments from Mrs. Powell's presentation earlier, you know, people are excited about being in Christiansburg. I think that's wonderful, spiritual of all of us. Recreation Commission that we have was the, supposed to be the first Monday of September, we moved it to Tuesday because of, obviously, observance of Labor Day. We had what could have been a contentious item that was on our agenda, probably one of the more contentious items we've had. Again, I hesitate to call it contentious. Councilman Shawalter was present as well, but it's involved in the park, and there's been a determination made that the park is best fit. And this, why I say park, for those of you in the audience, it's a mini park, and it's a property that we were fortunate enough to come across that we got for free. So basically, between $6,000 and $8,000 worth of playground equipment, we got for free. And a mini park is designed only to allow up to about a quarter of a mile diameter, if you will, from the park to, it serves those residents in those particular areas. Well, we have a location down on the John Loom Lane. It's the only area in town where we don't have a park that's designated for children, and it's just one piece of playground equipment, but there were some residents that were concerned. I'm very proud to report that people showed up, people spoke. It was very cordial, it was very appropriate, and there were no, again, nothing foul at all about it. There was some disagreement, but it was all done, again, very professionally. We had discussions about it. Chief Sisson had weighed in about activities at our local parks. We really tried to run down everything to make sure that we not only accommodated what the public was asking for, but also that we were able to give explanations for maybe why we might be moving forward, even though it was in contrast to what maybe they would like to see happen in some of them. The council had a great public hearing, if you can call it a public hearing, the council had a great meeting, and we did vote afterwards unanimously, I think council, the commission, to approve that property and that location. We do have a little bit of a footprint, the next meeting I'll bring in, to let you all see the actual pictures of it and what it will look like. But pretty much, it's two, it's going to be two pitting tables, a bench, and a piece of playground equipment, and that's really it. But it'll also be maintained very pretty. But again, I spoke with one individual who, that night, he actually sent me a text and asked me, "Encore, did it have to go?" And I said, "Well, we did the vote, decided to go forward on it." And I said, "And this is why." And he said, "Well, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you all listening to us." And that was someone who disagreed, and I can't speak, I speak for how that individual and the whole sort of process, that they understood what we were looking for and concerned very good. So again, I didn't mean to be long-winded, but it was, I was a little worried about that. Parks are exciting things, and I just didn't want that to be, I don't want to go sour tasting one's mouth about that, and I couldn't, commission could not have handled themselves, nor the residents in that. I'm very proud to report that. That's all I have.
Just clarification on that? Just clarification on that, that's an item for report in the moment, is that a question?
I'm going to, I'm going to actually bring in some visuals for everybody, and when I say rudimentary drawings, very rudimentary that Brad had sketched, but I want you to see what the playground equipment actually looks like. It was pretty impressive when I saw it, I had to send a picture of it, and that way you all have it in your mind as to what's, what to be expecting there.
Is that actually, we need to take this, council?
No, I don't believe so. I believe we have, council say that actually, that's part of our recreation master plan, and also, by the way, with the performance with the master plan, which a lot of, over a thousand residents were responsible for being involved in it, so.
Mr. Stipes?
One item, I'll try to be brief, just to keep council informed, Councilman Shawalter may, may have mentioned this, if we're going the other direction, if he did, I apologize, but as you know, we've had a lot of dialogue over the last six or seven years with Christiansburg Institute, and more recently, with Christiansburg Community Center with different requests, and there's been a chasm, they can't, we can't seem to, you know, get together these groups and make some meaningful progress, but not to belabor the issue, but Councilman Shawalter and I met with some representatives last, I think it was Thursday, and there does seem to be some new energy and some new potential, and we are, or they are working on hopefully, hopefully bringing together both groups, and actually, a vice president for Virginia Tech for diversity and inclusion, and there's some new ideas, and there is some new energy, but again, I just want to let you know that there's some more dialogue on that, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring, you know, hopefully, there'll be something meaningful come out of this, and most of all, that there'll be some unity here.
Just have a couple of things. Well, I did attend the recommission meeting, it is interesting to see several of our citizens stand up against the park, but we had several that stand up, that stood up and spoke for it. It's been a long time since I've been to the recommission, so it was nice to see all those faces. I typically see them in there playing basketball, but I just want to say one more thing by, I know several people who live on, John Lindley did not show up for the meeting, or in the area around there, and they were very excited about the park, so that's the first thing I did before I came to the commission, or right after, actually, because it was last minute attendance on my part, because it was, I was more interested to see what was going to go on with that, but they are very excited about it. I just want to welcome Harry to the River Regional Commission, he attended his first meeting, anything you want to say about that? He was very vocal.
Yes, I think it's going to be interesting, I really do.
Yeah, I really think it'll be good.
Hill about there.
Yeah, Hill was away, out of town on, or out of town, but let me tell you, I'm really excited Christiansburg's going to be represented, represented by all three of us. We finally got our due in there, so definitely, you know, take what's presented to you and get involved. It's really, Kevin Bird's an incredible leader, and he's assembled incredible staff out there. But again, during the commission meeting, Harry, of course, was very vocal, which is nice to see, and.
You're shocked, right?
Do I now?
So you're shocked, wouldn't you?
Oh, I was, probably saw my mouth open on the other side of you. You see where they place me, I'm at the very end. But, you know, the one thing that we typically hear about every meeting is the rail, and Christiansburg is always mentioned in that conversation, and again, it always gives me pleasure when we actually put our money where our mouth is, you know, we're buying the property and things of that nature, so I know they're excited about it, they're pushing for it, and, yeah, chimed in that we are excited as well, of course. Just with the Christiansburg Institute, I think it's, the meeting went very well, the direction that I believe that it's going to take is a good one, and it's something that will benefit us down the road if both groups can get together and we find additional partners. I've always thought that the Christiansburg Institute was a very important cultural item to the town of Christiansburg, and we heard Melissa talk about identity about the town, and it's something that will aid us in identifying ourselves, so I have my fingers crossed that there'll be a partnership with this, with all organizations that they're approaching, and that we can move forward with this, and really make it something nice.
Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Stipes?
I don't know, I might have a little optimistic note here, and maybe Randy, you can help me on this, but as I was driving here tonight, it looked to me like they were just about through with the sidewalks over there across the street from Mockingbird, is that right? It looked to me like they were almost ready to wrap up, and, you know, we have the success thing, and so I was really pleased when I saw all that, and it does look quite good, I think, you know, so I think that's a good, good note there. Sam, I wanted to say, I saw one of the memos here that you mentioned about the sign that was over there by, I take it over there by Waffle House, and, you know, I noticed that the other night myself coming in, and I was wondering where that sign came from. And I would like to bring, I hear about the Aquatic Center is doing something, it has just started today, and this is the second year that they have been involved in it, and the Lions Club is the people who are supplying the money, but every second grader in Montgomery County will get swim lessons this year, paid by, by the Lions Club. And like today, there was a hundred kids there, and it's every Monday, Monday through Thursday through October, and the way they have it, you get a thirty-minute lesson, and then you get a lecture on water safety, and then about thirty minutes for free time for the kids. And I just happened to be over there today, right as they were quitting, and kids were just, you know, just loving it, and some of these kids, you know, do not get to do the swimming, and it really, you know, really is a benefit, and when you hear people are drowning later on because they did not have something like this when they were kids, so I applaud the, applaud the team. And that's why I have it, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the last time we were in council, that was actually prior to the heritage, the truck, the truck, what's it called?
Touch truck.
Touch a truck, and the gospel scene, is that correct? I want to, and I don't mean to interrupt, I want to mention those three, I had a chance that you had all three of those, and what a fantastic Saturday, there's a lot going on, obviously, and I didn't realize, I just forgotten that it's actually after the fact. I saw Sam over at the gospel scene, and I saw everybody else, the heritage, obviously, the heritage days, they were fantastic, and very well attended, even with the weather at the gospel scene, and the touch truck must have had, I mean, there were kids, were everywhere. I was like a kid that can't sit over there with my daughters, but it was, it really a nice time, and I should have mentioned that. And one last thing about the recommission, I'm proud to let each of you know that in November, we will be bringing the next batch of recommission members for approval by the town council. We have our student representative, male and female, the young lady could not be for last meeting because she had a volleyball match, because we moved it from the Monday to the Tuesday, the young man was in attendance, and he was impressive, and I look forward, I'm just going to kind of keep things under my hat, I'm looking forward to introducing all those individuals to you all. We're doing interviews with the three individuals who applied and completed the application form, we're going to interview them in October, we've already reached out to them, is my understanding, to set those up, and that way we can, what I call, again, the usual term from Brad, vet the process, we'll bring those to you all, though, in November with recommendations. I didn't mean to interrupt anything, but I'd forgotten to mention that, that was important.
Great job, great job.
Thank you.
Matthew Bates, who was one of the high school members, he is the grandson of.
We can just let him take my hat off.
Jason Smith, so, he's a great kid, he's a great.
Impressive young man, he really was.
Okay. Thank you. Again, thank you, Randy, for mentioning the homecoming parade, and Mr. Biggs, thanks for the update on the public hearing on the highway department, VDOT bridges, it is, I've got it, room five to seven in room one at Christopher Middle School, on fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. The other thing, it's, Mr. Biggs circulated a, saved the date on the Chamber of Commerce annual dinner, and I'm not, you know, I think I finally decided, yeah, I'm not sure that those save the dates always were circulated after we got it, so it's something that Mr. Biggs and I are going to be talking about, and the possibilities of having, that's we'll get more involved with the, with the chamber in these types of events, and there's some things, some issues that you and I are going to get our heads with, together in the morning and the next day, and discuss that particular event for that particular item, it is December the first. Yeah, they haven't confirmed it, Mark Waters is going to be the guest speaker, so, but there's some, there's some things that I would like, he and I would like to see us become more involved in the attendance of some of these, a lot of us go to their, to their mixers and chambers after hours, but this is, this is their big gala, their show of the year, and there's some things that we, we just don't want to get into at this point until we got it, got it totally locked down, but we may be, we will be in touch with you all about internet, or, you know, possibly even we'll discuss it in our meeting at the beach, but there's just some things for it to handle.
Why do they have that between Thanksgiving and Christmas? Yeah, that's terrible.
You know.
I don't disagree, and we'll talk about it, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine, you know, it's not my circus, not my muggies, I'm just passing this thing on, but it is always historically that kind of year. So, anyway, we'll be in touch on that down the road. I think that's pretty much it, I believe the farmers market committee is going to meet very briefly tomorrow to get the thumbs up, hopefully, on the, do we want to have the Christmas on the market again this year and some other things, so, so that's five o'clock tomorrow.
One final quick thing that I've, I've mentioned in my report, is that the safe zones effort is moving forward, we've got some drafts of some possible signs that the two agencies, the police department, sheriff's department, are working together to resolve, we've been settled on, but I do want you to know that there is still interest and momentum behind that, right now.
Mr. Biggs, there's quite a few, whether it's from adjacent localities, they cannot wait to see how we do that, or how it's done, that everyone hopefully is going to follow suit.
It's done for a hundred bucks, we'll give them minutes.
There we go.
On other council business, we need to, a motion to cancel our meeting, the first, first scheduled meeting in October, the annual B M L conference.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion second, discussion. All those in favor, signify, oh, no, Madam Clerk, we best do that, this is a real one.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman McCollum?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sykes?
Aye.
These six, that passes, thank you, and I am going to work on a place that we can get together, I will be down there Saturday, prior to the meeting, to, for mayor's conference, and I'm going to work with them to see if we can find a spot, or a common area that we can, that we can meet in for, at a certain time on, maybe Sunday night. There you go. Is there anything else to come for council? We're on our journey.